So move second.
Motion by Belt, second by Wickman to approve the agenda. Comments? Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion has carried, thank you. All right. All right, first on the agenda is Becky Lenahan, Tax and Finance Officer, Auditor's Office. This is the public hearing on the matter of the proposed reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of general obligation capital loan notes series 2020A and to approve an authorized board to sign resolution number 25-2024. You need a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Belt, second by Jorgensen to open the public hearing on the proposed real allocation. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak?
We need a roll call to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Melvin.
Okay, Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Wickman, I, Bill, I, Jorgens.
Aye.
All right, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in regard to this public hearing on the reallocation of these funds? Is there anyone on the phone who would like to participate? If so, raise your hand and you will be admitted into the room. See any motions? Right, there's no public comment?
Motion to close public hearing.
Then I.
We have a motion by Belt, a second by Jorgensen to close the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Jorgensen.
Aye.
Belt, I, Wickman.
Aye.
Right, and with that, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number 25-2024.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Jorgensen and a second by Belt to approve and authorize the board to sign resolution number 25-2024. Any comments, questions? All right, Melvin, please call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Belt, I, Wickman, I, and Jorgens.
Aye.
Next up, Becky Lenahan, Tax and Finance Officer. We have a public hearing on matter of the proposed reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of the general obligation capital loan notes series 2021A and to approve and authorize board to sign resolution number 26-2024.
Second.
Right, so we have a motion by Wickman, second by Jorgensen to open the public hearing on the proposed reallocation of the unspent proceeds of the capital loan notes. Is there anyone from the public who would like?
Chairman Miller.
Do this right eventually.
We just gotta be patient, use your patience, we'll take our time.
All right, all right.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Wickman, aye, Bell, I, and Jorgens.
Aye.
All right, now is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Belt, second by Jorgensen to close the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Belt, aye, Wickman, aye, and Jorgens.
Aye.
These are pretty much house cleaning items, you know? Um, so no new bonds issued or anything.
All right, so now we need a motion on resolution number 26-2024.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Belt, a second by Jorgensen to approve and authorize the board to sign resolution 26-2024. Any discussion? Melvin, please call the roll.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Belt, I, Wickman, aye, Jorgens.
Aye.
All right, one more of those. Becky Lenahan, Tax and Finance Officer. Public hearing on matter of the proposed reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of the general obligation capital loan notes series 2022 and to approve and authorize board to sign resolution 27-2024.
Motion to open public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Belt, second by Wickman to open the public hearing on proposed reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of general obligation capital loan notes series 2022. Melvin, please call the roll.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Belt, I, Wickman, I, and Jorgens.
Aye.
Right, so the public hearing is open, is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on regard to this note? And online? No comments? Have a motion to close?
Second.
Motion by Wickman, second by Belt to close the public hearing. Melvin, please call the roll.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Wickman.
Aye.
Belt, I, Jorgensen.
Aye.
Now we need a motion to approve resolution number 27-2024.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion by Jorgensen, a second by Belt to approve signing resolution number 27-2024, is there any comments, discussion? Melvin, please call the roll.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Belt, I, Wickman, I, and Jorgens.
Aye.
All right. Next up, Becky Lenahan, Tax and Finance Officer, Auditor's Office. Public hearing on amendment to the current county budget for fiscal year 2023-24 and appropriate funds.
Motion to open public hearing.
Motion by Belt, second by Wickman to open the public hearing. Melvin, please call the roll.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Jorgensen.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
Bell.
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on the amendment to the current county budget? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none?
Move close. Second.
In a motion by Wickman, a second by Belt to close the public hearing. Melvin, please call the roll.
Supervisor Belt, I, Wickman, I, Jorgensen.
Aye.
And Miller?
And Miller.
Aye.
I get you.
Okay.
All right, next up, Becky Lenahan, Tax and Finance Officer. Approval of resolution number 24-2024, amending Potawatomi County budget for fiscal year 2023-24.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Belt, a second by Jorgensen to approve and authorize the board to sign resolution number 24-2024. Additional comments? Thank you.
Thank you, looks good.
I think I gave it, gave you the information you needed, so.
You did. The majority of it was a revenue change. Treasure and some additional revenue from the jail. You have what you need for that season.
Yes. Melvin, please call the roll.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Belt, I, Wickman.
Aye.
And Jorgens.
Aye.
All right, thank you all, we got one more, don't run off. And next up, we have Becky Lenahan, Tax and Finance Officer. Approval of resolution number 29-2024 to appropriate funds from amendment to the budget for fiscal year 2023-24.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Wickman and a second by Belt to approve and authorize the board to sign resolution number 29-2024 to appropriate the funds from the amendment to the budget. Melvin, please call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Belt, I, Wickman, I, uh, Jorgens.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Becky, thank you all.
House clean.
Appreciate your help with all of that.
Thank you, Melvin.
We'll pass the resolutions around for signature after the meeting, so.
Don't run away.
Don't run away, right? All right, next up, we have Antonia P. F. Smith, Director Council of Us Public Library. Carrie Rose, Director Eccles Memorial Library. And did Chelsea come in? No. For the Carter Lake Library. Discussion and or decision to approve and sign proclamation designating the week of April 7th through the 13th as National Library Week. And I want to thank you, you two, for coming in today. I think National Library Week is pretty important. I want to go on record, one of your librarians in the county is missing. Last week, the funeral was held for Margot Matthews. And let me read from her obituary. Margot passed away on Thursday, March 28th, 2024, at the age of 73, with her family at her side, family at her side after a very brief illness. Margot held several jobs during her career, but none she loved as much as being the director of the Walnut Public Library, a position she held for over 22 years. She poured her heart into the library and was proud of the accomplishments and accreditations the library achieved with her leadership. So many of the library patrons became friends she cherished through the years. She especially enjoyed Wednesday morning coffee with the ladies at the library. And Margot was the librarian at the Walnut Library. And she, I know she was a valuable consultant and mentor of yours, and she will be missed by many. Are there any updates you guys want to provide to the board?
Uh, we're just busy. We're just finishing up our community reads program, so we are getting ready to welcome a couple authors into the schools here in Council of Us and have every second grader and every sixth grader see those authors, so we're coordinating a lot in schools right now, getting ready for summer, so.
Countywide or, uh, project or just within the city?
Um, it's within the city, but it does touch on many Lewis Central students, who many of them live within the county. And we are working with our contract communities in that project as well, so those are communities that have many students within the county.
We just had an open house for our grand reopening, began some remodeling, and I'm prepping for summer, 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 summer. Right. Somebody wanted.
Make the motion, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion by Belt, a second by Jorgensen to approve and authorize the board to sign proclamation designating the week of April 7th to the 13th, 2024 as National Library Week, and I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. Whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Potawatomi County Board of Supervisors proclaim National Library Week, April 7th to the 13th, 2020-24. During this week, we encourage all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available. And with that, Melvin, will you call the roll?
Okay, Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors Belt.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
And Jorgens.
Aye.
Well, thanks again for coming in.
Thank you.
Next up, Amber Moore, Haboka Main Street. Discussion and or decision to approve funding request in the amount of $3,000. So Amber, you are celebrating your 10-year anniversary.
Yes, we will, we, uh, next week is the Main Street Iowa Awards, so we'll be calling stage for recognition of our 10th year as a Main Street program.
And where's that going to be held this year?
It'll be held in Des Moines, uh, I forget the venue name right now, they need the location, it's always in Des Moines every year. We'll also be supporting our Leadership Award recipient, but I can't reveal that information until after the awards ceremony.
I'll make that motion to approve the request for Haboka Main Street.
I'll say.
That's how you game it, sure.
Amber, can you, can you give us the total impact that Main Street, Haboka Main Street has had for the city of Haboka?
Yeah, you bet, um, so our cumulative impact as of the end of fiscal year 2023 is 4.2 million investment in our downtown projects and acquisitions, building acquisitions. Um, and I can tell you, I know that's our work closer to the 4.5 mark since the close of fiscal year 2023, because we've had a couple extra building sales. Uh, over 13,500 hours have been dedicated to the program. This results in 37,500 annual volunteer value added to our community. $420,000 in private annual investment in the district. And we're currently administering $75,000 of grant funds for development projects. And I'm currently writing a business expansion grant for $25,000, and I expect to write another development grant this year for another major project in our district.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is Bradbury's open yet?
No, we're so close, they just got shelves up yesterday and all their upstairs plumbing is done, really close.
Do they have a target date?
It all depends on getting the inspection scheduled on time, yep. So right now, I think they have to just add sneeze guards and then they can schedule the inspection. And last time we did a restaurant inspection, it was four months out, so that I'm not sure about.
In the meantime, it's farmer market season.
Farmer's market's coming up, we'll be accepting registrations anytime soon, so.
Anything else you want to tell us?
Um. Have to get something to be.
I think we hit on all the high points.
I hope so, yes.
So we have a motion by Belt, a second by Jorgensen to approve the funding. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
Right, next on the agenda, Mark Hughes, Jim Hughes, and Sandy Winton from Jim Hughes Real Estate. Update on the water sewer roads project on 240th Aspen Pioneer Trail and dump trees regarding their subdivision Pioneer Meadows. Right.
Morning supervisor. We have some maps to pass out here for you.
Ready?
Please, pardon me, you plug that program for me, please. No, good. Good, thanks. You been on one? That was most.
Pardon, please, are you Mark?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then you run to Brian.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Basically, we just wanted to come and kind of get the update, maybe give you guys a little bit of an update. It's been a while since we've been here talking about Pioneer Meadows. And, um, I talked to Matt, I got a little bit of information from him a couple weeks or so ago, and so just kind of wanted to hear how things are going with water and roads and kind of letting you all know, we've got five wells drilled on some of those properties, um, that are in red, that's on the map there. The one that was lot 16 in the green that says sold, that one's sold, it's got a well on it, and there's four other wells in different places around there. And those are available to be sold anytime now. And if somebody comes in and they want, um, to build a house before the water comes through, those are available. So I think that's kind of what we're just wanting to give an update and get an update.
John, you can probably tell them that, uh, you opened beds and.
Sure, so that. Board's on a contract for paving on dump trees from Aspen to Pioneer Trail as well as 240, so that's under contract now. Uh, construction will be starting in probably just weeks, I guess, in that portion. I do see on your map it lists seal coat and a couple roads, I don't know that I've ever been authorized to do that part, I guess it's been talked about, but I don't know.
Or hoping to or something.
Some hopes there, then obviously 240th North Pioneer Trail back to 92 needs done, and I, I don't know where the funding is for that one yet, but those two roads on the border year subdivision are under contract now, though.
Dump trees and 240?
Yes.
What's the water, the water steps? We, we wrote a check to pay for the personal of the water, and I just hope we've got any updates, if you guys got any updates on the water.
We, uh, we'll, we'll have him in here next week or the following week, and we'll get an update from him and and make sure that that gets forwarded to you. I know, I believe that it's been bid and the money's available, and, um, I think it's a matter of them, uh, getting started, but like I said, we'll, we'll have him in and we'll get an update to you.
I can see he's receiving a substantial grant.
Yeah.
They, they pulled permits for the work too along some of the roads.
Pulled.
So, but yeah, they're, I'm not sure where they are in the process, but they're, they're beyond that already.
I thought they were good to go, and it's
keep in mind your agenda, see if we can see another, if you can reach out to us, let us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Come back.
I heard he was still going to make the date, so.
If he, if he can't make it in the next, um, meeting or two, we'll get, uh, we'll get something written from him and be able to provide that to you.
Fantastic.
With the road work that we're getting done, do you all have a timeline on when you're going to start your submittals for this subdivision? Because I think with the, I was looking at kind of some timelines that we have, and it could be 180 days before we get to preliminary plating. And then John needs to get construction documents for the roads submitted to his office, so then, because he has a 60-day review time on those. Just to kind of make sure that you're aware of those pieces of it, so.
I know we plan on doing phases, we're going to work with HGM on that, so that information will come and contact them and try to come up with all of those discussions.
Agreed.
A lot of that work's already been done, hasn't it, Mark?
Yeah, the preliminary work. Yeah, yeah, we've got the apps.
What's the total number of lots again?
Eighty-eight, so the upper top right corner.
Okay, there it is.
Well, we're, we're definitely, um, anxious to get this thing moving, and I know it's, it's taken us a little longer than anticipated. Think that, once, once water gets rolling and, you know, we get this road completed, that'll really change things, and hopefully be able to speed you up a little.
Thank you.
Allow you to speed up a moment.
We'll look forward to seeing you maybe next week or two, and the water people are here for an update.
Yeah, like I said, if we can't get them in, we'll get, we'll get a rich statement brought back to you.
And I'm Mark Hughes, my brother Jim would not even be here to, it's not feeling that.
He's been hanging out with Brian.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Sandy.
Next, John Raspison, engineer, discussion and or decision to approve project funding agreement 4-23-HPB-S-010 for the 210th Street Bridge over Pigeon Creek.
Sure, uh, so this comes out, we're federal bridge funds, we're allocated so much money every year. We pull it up, then we do a project, so project this year is remove that trust bridge over Pigeon Creek, and we have about six of those left in the county. The agreement was $1.8 million for the work, a little bit of alignment there. We'll pay this out of our local funds and be reimbursed, so this is a little bit different. Normally, we spend out of a fund in, in Ames, and this time, we're going to have to spend local and get reimbursed.
So 1.8?
Yeah.
How long, how long will that take?
Uh, it's probably going to be a nine-month project.
Good.
We'll start that in the winter, we'll can't really be used for harvest now, the bridge has a restriction on it, plus width and height, so we'll start it in the winter and wrap it up hopefully in the spring.
Will, will, will we do it?
No, it's, it's, it's too big for our local crews, we can't use federal funds with our local crews.
So it isn't, because it went to bed, then?
No, it'll bed either September or October, I haven't quite got that timing right. The federal fiscal year's there, and I'm trying to decide, I have to do some paperwork if I move it to October, so.
But the 1.8's a guess, I'm going to play you that.
Yes, it is, it should be high as well, so. I was guessing when everything was jumping 20%, so I was trying to get it out of it, maybe.
So, okay, thank you. Make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Belt, a second by Jorgensen to approve the project funding agreement for bridge replacement over Pigeon Creek. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Next, uh, we have John Raspison, discussion and or decision to approve the Iowa Department of Transportation's secondary roads budget and county five-year program. Thank you for the beautiful map that just shows it.
Not that great, I did bring copies of the plan program and the map, if you guys have problems printing it. It's all on different paper sizes, so it seems, uh, not to print or share so well electronically. For the budget is just reverberating what the county is proposing for my department, but in the DOT format, so budget-wise, it's the same thing that you'll be preparing to approve. Timeline-wise, it doesn't make sense, because Iowa code gave you an extension, a time extension, and they didn't give me one, so I'm still required to report in April, and you guys have more time than that, so if I'm wrong, I guess we can amend it, but using the best information we have. Uh, the county five-year plan program, I guess we'll call it here, uh, basically in that one, when the infrastructure grants started, I kind of changed the strategy on those, and I program illustre projects, which just means I, I have a need, but I don't have the money, so I, I plan them that way. Uh, the DOT's always kind of been against showing projects that you can't actually fund, so our, our program's full of projects basically for to streamline the grant hunting process for me, uh, so didn't add a lot of projects, uh, kind of since inflation hit in about 2020, we've been running about 20% overrun costs. So we're really slowed down in construction, I would say we're in a status quo cycle for a while. Last big increase we had was in 2015 on the, the gas tax, and that's kind of been consumed now, so have some big projects in there for Tamarack, uh, Wabash, Old Lincoln Highway, Old Mormon Bridge Road, and some of those other projects, but, um, seeking funding either through a grant, or we're just going to continue to pool funding in our, our annual allocations until we can afford them, so not a, not a lot of hoopla on the five-year plan.
Thanks, Tamarack.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, it, it looks a little worse every year. Uh, L-34 is out there, it might be that L-34 gets patched, and we move that money to Tamarack a couple years out from that decision, I guess, but it has happened before where something fell apart faster, and Tamarack's not looking so great there, but but if you don't have the money, I guess that, uh, is what it is.
John, would you have any? John, would you have any kind of a timeline for the G-30 bridge in Underwood?
The G-30, we're going to, that's in the 25 federal fiscal year. So after October, I can let it, so probably looking at January, February letting, start on that. So we'll have some public carings on that probably in Underwood just to let everybody know what we're doing out there.
Just want to make sure that we do our due diligence, keep everybody as informed as possible. Because that's going to be a big deal. You've got to keep one lane open, that was right.
We're, I don't think we can actually keep one lane open over the railroad tracks or at the interstate. We're going to keep the bridge open during construction and, and try to stage that. But we have a couple little pieces that we're, we're just kind of painted in a corner on. But we're trying to minimize the, the closure time and dates, but.
Need a motion for that, Susan?
I do.
I'll move that for you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Wickman, a second by Bell, to approve the Iowa DOT's secondary roads budget and county five-year program. Your additional discussion?
Only other discussion, I shouldn't have brought it up maybe a little sooner. That piece out there at Shelby is, they've been in the CU about that, that they're.
One of those annexes.
Yeah, we may as well turn that into a city street.
Yeah, the annex does. I, I need to meet with them and do a maintenance agreement on that one as well. On the farm-to-market roads, I can work through town. That's not a farm-to-market road, so I have to come up with another agreement. A separate one on that one, yeah.
There it is. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, John, for putting that all together.
You're going to hand those maps out, right?
Yeah. You want me to just leave them with Jeanette? Do you want it now?
Yeah, either way.
I'll leave it with Jeanette. Or another, sorry.
All right. Next, Dixie Wilton, accounting technician, auditor's office. Discussion and/or decision to approve, disallow the following applications made to the assessor's office. Homestead, approximately 344 recommended, allowed. Six recommend disallowed. Military, 25 recommend allowed. One recommend disallowed. Disabled veteran homestead, 13 recommend allowed. Zero recommend disallowed. And family farm, five recommend allowed. Zero recommend disallowed. So.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
The one military, one that was disallowed had an address change.
Yes, so they have to live in the residence in order to still get the credit. And we'll send them a letter letting them know in case it's, for some reason, the address changed or erroneous. There's something, they have time to let me know.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dixie. Next up, Jenna Limerick, Director Human Resources. Discussion and/or decision to approve and authorize board to sign general drivers and helpers, Local Number 554, affiliate of the International Brotherhood of Teamsters, the detention officer, union contract effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Wickman and a second by Bell. Is there any discussion?
I would just call out to you the two changes in the union contract for this year. The first change is on page 20, regarding initial vacation selection period. Previously, it said that they could begin selecting their vacation December 5th. But we've changed that wording simply to read upon completion of shift assignments. That way, once they get their shift assignments, they can start bidding for vacations and holidays right away. There's no need to wait until December 5th. Your other changes are on page 32. Regarding wages, wages will be paid according to the stepping grade that's attached. Starting wages start at $26.25 an hour. Employees will receive a step increase. And those that are on that last step, which is step 10 or bucket 10, will receive a 5% pay increase. Corporals are added into the contract. We previously had an MOU adding corporals into this union contract. They're in the contract now, receiving an additional 50 cents per hour. And those are the only changes. The union ratified this contract the Friday before last.
Yeah, is this the last union negotiations?
This was the last one we were waiting for. The deputies will be on your agenda next week, but they have already ratified. Yeah, we were just getting it typed up and having them sign it. But yes, everything is all finished.
All right. So we have a motion by Wickman and a second by Bell to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next, Jenna Limerick, Director Human Resources, and Heather Schaefer, Assistant Human Resources. Discussion and/or decision for human resources to rebrand the job descriptions with an accuracy audit to ensure consistency.
Hello again. We have created a new job description template, which will encompass our new logo and bring consistency across all job descriptions across departments. What we'd like to do is Heather and I will be pre-populating those job descriptions with the current job description, meet with the department heads and review. We're specifically reviewing and conducting an audit to ensure that there's consistency across the job classification specifications. So whether it says union or non-union, which union, pay grade, exemption status, we want to make sure that those are all as they should be. If any changes need to be made, we'll make those and bring those to the board for approval. And then all systems will flow accordingly. Tyler will be updated, IT will be updated. All of that will flow after those job descriptions are updated.
Housekeeping.
It's a, it's a lot of housekeeping, yes, yes. But the template is, is really the, the biggest change.
Any job descriptions, what you mean?
Everyone. So we have. If you, when we have ski hill staff, we have 600 to 650 employees, I would say. And then job titles and job descriptions, probably 200?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably about 200. We'll meet with each department individually to go through them all, to make sure that we're all on the same page before we. And then our goal is, once they're all updated in that format with board approval, then they'll be on our website as well. Public-facing part of the website, not just the internet site.
Need a motion?
Move.
Say it.
By Wickman, second by Bell, to approve the rebranding of the job descriptions. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is committee appointments, updating the board members on meetings from last week. And I attended the public hearing on the Pigeon Creek Drainage District. It was held at the EMA Building last Thursday. And they had approximately 120 people in attendance. The hearing has been continued. They have not determined a date and a time for that. Now they're working around planting season, so that kind of adds a new difficulty to that. But they are moving forward. And then Melvin and I were on a phone meeting with Thriving Families Alliance. And they are working on their regional consolidation. So that's a new undertaking for them, so.
Monday, yesterday, I was at the Veterans Services Board meeting. I'm very impressed with our Veterans Services organization. They truly go work hard to help our veterans here in Potawatomi County, especially veterans who are in need of housing or to maybe improve their, their housing situation. They work very hard at it, and I just think that.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Now we come to the public comment section. There anyone on the sign-up sheet?
Princess.
Princess. All right, let me make our comment statement.
Here, three.
Now begins our public comment portion of the agenda. In an effort to protect the privacy of individuals and reduce the potential broadcasting of defamatory and/or confidential information, our live broadcast will now end. Information regarding public comments.